This meeting of the Starkville Board of Aldermen will now come to order. Please rise for the saying of a pledge of allegiance, after which Alderman Vaughn would like to yield to Reverend Lindley, believe us in a word of prayer, and we will observe a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hallelujah. Most gracious God, we thank you for this place, we thank you for this town, we thank you for people who are willing to lead, people who are willing to work, people who will come out to a meeting just because they care about their community. Bless us tonight, bless us with your wisdom, bless us with your strength. We pray in Christ's name, amen.
All right, you have before you a copy of the written agenda, are there any proposed changes to the agenda as written? Any proposed revisions? Are there any proposed revisions to the agenda? Any proposed revisions? Saying none, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as written? Motion has been made by Alderman Little to approve the agenda as written, do I hear a second? Motion has been seconded, Alderman when? Alderman Little, do you wish to speak on the merits? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter before you is the consideration of the minutes from the December 15th meeting. Motion has been made by Alderman Carver to approve of the December 15th, 2015, minutes of the meeting of the mayor and board of Aldermen of the city of Starkville, Mississippi, incorporating any and all changes as recommended by the city attorney, otherwise as presented. Alderman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Carver, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter you have before you is announcements and comments by the mayor and members of the Board of Aldermen. I have no comments this evening, are there any comments by the members of the Board? Alderman when?
Mr. Sanders, will you please come forward? Is Mr. Buddy Sanders on here? Thank you so much, Mr. Sanders. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Board. Last week, we had an opportunity to attend classes at the Midwinter Conference in Jackson. In the class Buddy and I took this class, and it was called Advanced Economic and Community Retreat. And Buddy and I want to share something with you this evening. While we were in that class, of course, the first something that the presenter did, we were allowed to introduce ourselves. So Buddy and I were up front, but in the order in which we went, we were pretty much almost the last people to introduce ourselves, and we being from the city of Starkville, she was excited to have us in our class. Buddy can tell you this, you all, I wish that you had been there for the presentation. It was like she sung the city of Starkville's praises about the new development that we have going on here in our city. She mentioned the mill, she mentioned our board members. It was just amazing. And Buddy turned to me, and he said, "We couldn't pay for this." And every time she would say something else, he would say, "She couldn't pay for it, we couldn't pay for this." And she had slides of our city, whether it was Main Street, the mill before, the mill afterwards, it was just truly amazing. And for me, it was so great, because so often when I've been out of town, I've sat in classes, and I hear these presenters singing the praises of Columbus and Tupelo, well, that day, I can say this, no Columbus was mentioned, no Tupelo mentioned, it was Starkville, Mississippi, that's home to Mississippi State. Buddy, don't leave me by myself, do you have anything to say?
Well, I just want to say that Starkville was represented very well in the class. The case study was Starkville. We had many mayors and all persons from around the state to come up after the class and congratulate us, and also ask us our opinions of what they could do to improve their communities. Starkville was very well presented in the class. It was almost like the instructor was a city Starkville employee, so great to be out of the class.
Mayor, one more thing. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. And her name was Mrs. Jan Miller, and she is actually the Director of Field Services for the Mississippi Main Street Association. And let me say one more thing, Buddy, before you leave. On July 1st, since we took office, and the members of this Board as well as the mayor, we took our office on July 1st, 2013. Since that time up until this time, our city has, the investments in our city, with the building projects of development, the total amount of money is $190 million. And let me say that figure again, $190 million under the term of this mayor and this Board. Thank you so much, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you.
Mayor, I yield the floor.
Are there any further comments? Alderman Perkins.
Thank you. Ms. LaShonda Malone, will you come up front a minute, please? And while you're on your way, just a couple of questions. Just want to say, number one, glad to see you here tonight, representing the Fire Department, and I saw you two young men, I'm looking forward to the introduction of them to the Board tonight. I know you're going to do an excellent job, and I guess you have recused them from the meeting tonight, huh? I'm not giving you a hard time, but I look forward to the introduction, but glad to have you here. You excuse me, the next meeting?
We were informed that they did not have to be introduced tonight, they will be at the next Board meeting.
We look forward to meeting, glad to have you here tonight. The chief told us that you would be here, thank you for your hard work here. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, do you have any further comments?
I yield, Mayor, thank you so much for recognizing, thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir.
Are there any further comments by the members of the Board? Any further comments? Any further comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move to citizen comments. Any citizen wishing to make comments may do so by coming forward, introducing yourself, and you'll be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes.
Welcome to the Midboard, my name is Alton Ward Seven, like recognized by Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Al. Jane Brothers had sung out a year ago, "Talk Loud, Say Nothing." Like, we need to let the citizens know that we care, you understand? Town mayors, they need to stop making toys on, look like, dirty, it's nothing worse. How you to know that it's a toy, or it's the real thing? Town mayors need to understand that. Children get shot if you knew that it was a toy, and not the real thing. We have dogs that run loose on Northern Avenue, we have a lot of children, we have dogs running loose on the reroute, running loose. We have a dog, boy, so when he bit, they, that's the one thing, everything, but they stay. And we have children that on the Bick Street, and we have partners, then we have the Good Street Center there, and we also have Noah, hope they don't be a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Do we have any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Are there any further citizen comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move to our public hearing this evening, and it's a public hearing on the Tax Increment Financing Plan for the Stark Crossing Development Project. At our last meeting, you set the terms that you wanted the city attorney and the developer's consultant to have drafted for the public hearing. The terms that you set were pledging up to 100% of the ad valorem taxes generated by the development, and pledging up to 25% of the sales taxes generated by the development. The city attorney has worked with the developer's consultant, and they have drafted the parameters to the TIF plan and agreement as the motion you passed dictated. Now, since that time, I have had conversations with the developer's consultant, and also in that plan, you set the maximum parameters, $1.5 million for the maximum amount of TIF bonds that would be issued. And the developer, through his consultant, has indicated that they would be willing to commit to the development at a maximum value of $1.5 million. However, they did note there was an issue with the 25% we pledged as a maximum sales tax value. And that is, in order to actually qualify for $1.5 million in bonds on the numbers that they have assumed for the project, the interest rate on the bonds would have to be between 4 and 4.5%. Now, that is not impossible, but given the current TIF bond market climate, it's also not likely. The developer's consultant is probably the most prolific consultant in issuing TIF bonds around the state, and he has indicated that as of late, he is receiving interest rates above 6%. His most recent issuance was 6.85%. So the request that they made was to modify the sales tax pledge to a number that would ensure that they could issue bonds for $1.5 million on their numbers if the interest rate was as high as 7%. Now, that figure, what would require to be pledged under those circumstances, would be a max of 33%. I indicated to him, if the developer was willing to commit to the project under those terms, that I thought it would be a good decision for the city to modify it up to 33%. And my reasoning is this, it still leaves us with a conservative ratio in terms of the total sales tax that's going to be collected on the property. You'll recall from our discussion at the last meeting, my major concern with sales taxes is you don't know how many of the sales at a retail development are going to be new sales, and increase the overall sales taxes collected in the city. Well, if $2 out of every $3 are going into the city general fund, I think we're safely covered to ensure that we're bringing more revenue into the city than we have pledged to the project. And with the assurances of the developer that those are numbers that we'll have a viable project on, I think the risk of losing this project otherwise is not a reality that we want to deal with. So I would like to ask Mr. Gurus, who is the developer's consultant. Mr. Gurus, are you authorized to speak on behalf of the developer tonight?
Yes, sir, I am, and for the record, Chris Gurus, Gurus Associates, here in Babin, Multi-Site, and everything the mayor who is representing here is accurate and consistent with my client's desire to move the project forward at 33% cap on sales tax. That will ensure that the parameters are broad enough to make it work. I do believe this Board, its last meeting, when it set the million and a half cap, intended for it to work at that number, and these parameters will get us there. I'd also like to state, for the record, that I represent the developers, but this obviously is for the benefit of Academy, as the new retailer comes to town, and they reached out to your development officials and spoke with Mr. Higgins, and one of the things they shared with us as it relates to the cannibalization of the transfer of sales, that if they were dependent upon 50% of sales having to come from existing retailers, that's not a market they would go into. So their business model contemplates a lot more of these sales coming from outside the market than from within, and I wanted to state that on behalf of the project as well. So we're ready to go forward, and with a favorable response, we are on the county's agenda this evening to ask them to set a hearing for February 1st, at their first meeting on Monday, and that should lead us to, you know, a real estate closing in February, and hopefully construction start by the end of March.
And you can confirm that the developer will commit to the project under those terms?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gurus. Any questions for Mr. Gurus? Any questions or comments from the members of the Board? Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the members of the Board? Before we start the public hearing, what you have before you is what came from the motion that was passed at the last agenda. So you have documents that include a 25% cap on sales tax. I am recommending to you that you modify that up to 33%, because those are the terms that the developer is assuring us that they'll go forward on the development project with. Any questions or comments from the members of the Board? All right, seeing none, we'll now hear public comments. Any citizen wishing to make a comment may do so by coming forward, introducing yourself, and you'll be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes.
My name is Alton Ward Seven. Doing this, are we able to pay a bill without getting, citizens say taxes are high enough, but are we able to pay a bill, as you say?
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments in the public hearing? Any further comments?
Please, Dan Shipp. And another thing I request is, operator of business, long-term business here in Starkville, is to be treated equitably. And as you look at it, we've been here, doing business a long time in Starkville, and we just ask to be treated fairly. What rule apply to one should apply to all. And are you giving a competitor an undue advantage over someone who's already here and not receiving such government subsidies in order to operate here? So as you've been here, I just hope you consider that other businesses here in town that have been here, made commitment, under circumstances, that have fought to pay their way without any government subsidy, that's what this basically is. I hope you consider other businesses here in town that they have been under, not treated fairly in the deal.
Thank you, Mr. Shipp.
My name is Bobby Craig, and I'm the manager at the Sports Center here in Starkville. And I've lived here for about 13 years now, and this store has been in my family, the company has been in my family for seven years this year. And I just kind of wanted to speak to something I read in the paper this morning about the possibility of a generation of $26 million in sales figures. And, you know, just looking at our sales figures every day, and considering what those are, and looking at basically what we do on a yearly basis, and what we do on a day-to-day basis, I mean, you're looking at, excuse me, you're looking at about well over $70,000 a day. And I don't know if this is contingent upon y'all's decision, you know, if this amount of money is necessary for y'all to have your agreement, but it just doesn't seem feasible, it's not a realistic figure, excuse me, to expect that kind of income from a business like this. I know what our best days have been on certain, say, when MSU has a home football game, or Christmas shopping day, and these numbers of our best days are just a handful, and they don't even come close to what a store of this magnitude would have to average in a day. And if the expectation is $26 million, I think $73,000 a day in sales is, and I know the possibility is that it could generate that, and I don't even know if maybe you need that or don't need that. I don't know what that need figure is as opposed to could generate, but that figure is way off. And I don't know if the attorney, I don't know if this figure's come from an attorney, or where this figure's come from, but it's not a realistic figure.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Any further comments? Any further comments? Any further comments? Seeing none, are there any concluding comments in the public hearing from the members of the Board? Alderman Perkins.
Thank you. Mr. Shipp, will you come back down, please, sir? Mr. Shipp, yes, I have a couple of questions for you. What business are you on here?
The general manager of Black Tech, of any co-op.
Okay. And basically, I understand your argument, or your comments, that, you know, that we should treat all business equitably without having to selectively give subsidies, and where, by, you know, for, let's say, the co-op, you know, you all operated from day one without any governmental assistance, and all business should be treated alike.
Correct.
Yeah, well, let me say this, that's been my philosophy all along, and I agree with your philosophy, and, you know, my position is, is that, Mr. Shipp, that when you start this, you know, that sets a dangerous precedent, in my opinion, I think my opinion's the minority view here, and so, but, you know, I call it a handout. When you give handouts, then other people are going to start getting, asking, so if you give it to one, then it gets in a position, how are you going to turn others down? So they got a lot of arguments the other side can make, but I have a very conservative philosophy on it, you know, as a business person, you know, people don't help me to start no business, neither you, so we have to work hard for a living, and I think we should treat all businesses alike, and of course, I'm for business and economic development and pro-growth, but I just want to say I appreciate your comments tonight, and y'all have done a great job, you know, with your business. I just want to say thank you for your leadership and coming to us tonight, and I just want, primarily for the record, where your business located, but thank you for being a part of Starkville, and thank you for being, having a strong presence, and y'all have a great asset, and there are a lot of people, my constituents and otherwise, who really patronize your business, and you all do an excellent job with all of the products that you tender to our market. So thank you again for everything.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Alderman when?
How long has the co-op been in operations here in Starkville?
Since 1937. We were recognized a few years ago as the oldest business in town, I think they're older, but that was the record, but 1937 when it was founded.
Any further comments from the members of the Board? Any further comments from the members of the Board? Any further comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move into the discussion and consideration of the development reimbursement agreement bound between the--
Yeah, that will come third.
You want the resolution first?
It actually has to, may I speak?
You may.
Board, if you're willing to go forward on this issue, I propose a three-pronged approach. The first motion that would be applicable would be to amend the city's sales tax from its original pledge of 25% to the new pledge proposed tonight of 33%. So that would be the first motion. The second motion of the night, if the first motion were to pass, would be a motion to approve the resolution, which approves the specific TIF plan relating to this project. And if that motion were to pass, the third motion would be a motion to approve the development and reimbursement agreement.
All right, so with this move into discussion generally on the matter, you've got two documents before you. You've got the resolution to approve the TIF plan, and the TIF plan sets the maximum parameters for the TIF agreement. And you've got the TIF agreement. That is the city's contract with the developer that states our obligations more firmly in terms of what our expectation of performance is, and what their requirements of performance are to trigger our expectation of performance. So as the city attorney indicated, the first matter would be to decide whether you want to amend the parameters of the TIF plan and agreement to maximize the sales tax at a max of 33% from the 25%. And then your second two actions would be the plan first and the developer agreement after that. Discussion. Alderman Little.
Mr. Gurus, I'd like to say I appreciate you rolling up your sleeve over the last week or so, and working behind the scenes, trying to get some of this done, to get something that the developers were comfortable with, to move this forward. And Mr. Shipp and Mr. Craig, your concerns do not fall upon deaf ears, and this is something that the Board, and future Boards are also going to be mindful of going forward with any TIFs, because, again, every time someone comes to town, we'd like to locate here, I think we've got a good viable market and a growing market, and that in of itself should be the reason for folks wanting to invest in our town. So that is something I think the Board needs to be mindful of going forward, so. With that, I'm going to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we move that the debt service incurred for the proposed TIF bonds relating to Stark Crossing Development Project shall be provided from the increments of 100% of the city's ad valorem, real estate and personal property tax revenues, and 33% of its sales tax revenues from the project.
Have you reduced that to writing?
Yes, I have.
Motion has been read, it's been reduced to writing, I am presenting it to the clerk. Without objection, I will not ask for it to be reread. Seeing no objection, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded, Alderman when? Alderman Little, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Discussion. Any discussion? Alderman Walker.
Just say that I do believe that this is an important issue, to try to look at how do you balance the idea of generating new growth, and being mindful of the existing businesses that have chose to locate and make a go in Starkville. And I, for one, find that to be a very tough, delicate balancing act. I try to look at each project individually to determine whether or not I believe it's TIF-worthy. I believe there are a lot of reasons for this type of development to want to come to Starkville. I believe there is some rationale for being, for asking for the TIF, and for us granting a TIF. But I don't believe that it's a slam dunk, easy decision to make for our community. I believe there are a lot of reasons to give a TIF, especially when you're talking about real public infrastructure. And I wish there were more in this project where that was going to be real public infrastructure in terms of roads that were going to be dedicated to the city. However, I do believe that this development can help spark some redevelopment in west side of Starkville along Highway 12. And I think that's what this development is likely going to do, is going to put pressure on future boards to really look at how we try to maximize what we are not giving up in this TIF, to be able to force us to put that money towards Stark Road. Because what this development is inevitably going to do is going to increase the need for an expansion of Stark Road. It's going to do that, without question. And so by approving this project, future Boards are going to have to look at how do you find ways to improve Stark Road to make this project really viable. So with that being said, I think I'm going to be supportive of this project tonight, knowing that it is not an easy decision, and that every project is not TIF-worthy. Every retail project specifically is not TIF-worthy. But I believe in this case, it is in the best interest of our community to make sure that we land a national chain to be in Starkville. So with that being said, Mayor, I yield the floor.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Alderman Little's motion, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. By vote of six in favor and one against, motion passes. Now, continuing the format that the city attorney laid out, the next matter that you would need to approve would be the TIF plan.
Move approval of the resolution of the mayor and board of Aldermen of the city of Starkville, Mississippi, approving the adoption and implementation of the Tax Increment Financing Plan Stark Crossing Development Project, city of Starkville, Mississippi, as amended and authorizing the issuance of tax increment financing revenue bonds in the amount not to exceed $1,500,000, and for related purposes.
Have you reduced it to writing?
Yes, sir.
It's been read, it's been reduced to writing, I'm presenting it to the clerk. Without objection, I will not ask for it to be reread. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded, Alderman when? Alderman Little, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Discussion. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Alderman Little's motion, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. By vote of six in favor with one against, this motion passes.
The resolution to use, that's amended.
That's the resolution.
And that's amended, city clerk. So use that one.
Alderman Little.
Move approval of the development and reimbursement agreement between the city of Starkville, Mississippi, and Multi-Site Starkville LLC, as amended relating to the Stark Crossing Development Project.
Motion has been reduced to writing, I'm presenting it to the city clerk. Without objection, I will not ask for it to be reread. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded, Alderman when? Alderman Little, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. By vote of six in favor with one against, motion passes.
That's the amended development agreement. That's the amended development agreement.
The next matter before you is the authorization for the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Loxley Way Blackjack TAP application. This is a project that I was very excited to learn about. As you know, when we built the Lynn Lane Bike Path, it terminates at a seemingly awkward place at the intersection of Howard Road and South Montgomery. The reason it terminates there is because of the configuration of Loxley Way and the utilities and the built environment beside it do not accommodate the width of the path that was built from Howard Road to the Sportsplex. And the way the TAP program works is that when you build a path, it has to be consistent all the way from point to point. So if we could not maintain the same parameters on Loxley Way, we couldn't continue the path down Loxley Way on that grant program. The objective was always to make a connection all the way to the university, crossing a very large student housing development there on Loxley Way. And what we decided to do years back was get as far as we could get, which was to Howard Road, and then figure out how we were going to get to the university from Howard Road. I am very pleased that Brickley Miller, who was recently elected to the Board of Supervisors and represents that area, has approached the city and asked us to partner with the county on a TAP application. And Mr. Kemp is going to summarize a little bit of the merits of that application, but this would allow us to meet an important objective in connecting that path to the university. And she is seeking monetary support from the university. And under this representation, the city and the county would maintain an equal share of the match for the grant. And that leaves open the question as to whether the university would make a contribution. And in event the university makes a contribution, the city and the county would still have the equal shares of what's remaining after the university's contribution. But in any event, I believe this is a very, very positive development and very enthusiastically recommend your approval of the letter to get the process started. Mr. Kemp?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll be very brief, but I just want to run through a couple of the project overview highlights. Feel free to stop me along the way. Most of y'all are familiar with the TAP program. We have a couple of ongoing TAP projects going on right now. Russell Street, we're in the final design phase. And Louisville Street, we just started the initial surveying on that project. Both of those are TAP projects. Those are 80-20 grants. Essentially, 80% of the funding comes from federal transportation dollars, but they can be matched with 20% of local funds and those funds are typically not allowed to be in kind. The applications for this round is, once a year, they are open. It's coming up in about a week and a half. And we'll know sometime in April of 2016 if we're awarded. Like the mayor said, we were approached by the county supervisor, Miller, and we had a meeting with the university about a week and a half, two weeks ago, to kind of get their feeling on where they would want the project to tie into. Had a real positive meeting since then. The university has verbally agreed to pay for one-third of the match. So if you do the numbers on that, we've done a very rough cost estimate, a little short of around $925,000, which puts the match at about $185,000. And splitting that three ways would be $62,000 with the county, university, and the city all sharing that. The good thing about that is it's going to be carried over on two, minimum of two, but probably three budget cycles, so you can really spread those matches out over time. So you're looking at between $20,000 or $30,000, depending on how the project progresses. You have in your packet a copy of the support letter. That is necessary as part of the application. Essentially, it outlines that the city is agreeable to it, supports it, as well as will provide maintenance for the project facilities that are constructed. And in that letter, it doesn't entail that it is only the facilities that are located within the city limits. This project does extend out past the city limits a little bit, and that will be the responsibility of the county to maintain that. Here's a map of the proposed route that we are looking at, that MSU has signed off on that they are agreeable to. As the mayor was talking about, here's the Lynn Lane path and where it terminates here at the entrance to Pleasant Acres. This is Montgomery, north is up. And then along Loxley Way, we will have a situation where we'll have a sidewalk on one side of the road, and then you'll have a bike lane that's actually within the asphalt pavement. Everything will be re-stride to accommodate for that new configuration. And then, once you get to the Blackjack Road intersection, the path will run along the south side of the road, and it will be very similar to the Lynn Lane Bike Path. It'll be a 10-foot wide concrete path separated from the roadway. At this time, we don't really know in this section what side of the road the sidewalk will go. That's something that the engineers will have to work out as we progress through if we are awarded the grant. That's kind of the long and the short. The county is actually meeting right now, and hopefully they will get an affirmative response from them as well, supporting the grant. But that is the long and the short of it. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to talk to you. I should note also, when we were down in Jackson last week for MML, we had some really good conversations with MDOT, their folks down in Jackson headquarters, and they were very excited about the project, very supportive. They, of course, are very familiar with Mississippi State and Starkville and saw the need of this continuation into the campus. So I think it'd be well received from the MDOT side as well.
Discussion. Aldman Little.
I'm excited to see the county reaching out to us on this project and also potentially involving the university as a partner. I think that's a win-win for everyone. And looking at the layout of that map, it gives us an avenue, gives folks in that area access on game day to walk to the game safely, you know, off the streets and out of the shoulders of the roadway, and would really be a bonus. It also completes Phase One, which I think, if my history is right, has spanned over three boards have been involved in that project. So if this would speed that process up in completing it, it seemed like it just drops and stops here, Loxley Way, and that's what it does. But this, I think, would be a lot more useful if it connected to the university. I think it'd add more functionality in usage and participation in using the bike path and walking path. So I would definitely be supportive of this. Thank you. Are you?
Further discussion? Aldman Maynard, then Aldman Win.
I think Aldman Win had her hand up.
Aldman Win.
Okay. Mr. Sanders, would you please come forward, please? Thank you so much. Mayor, vice mayor, members of the board, again, last week while we were at MML, not only did our city engineer and our community development director attend classes, but we made sure that we did, we took the time to go down to MDOT because our city engineer definitely has relationships with those people, and it's always important to give them when you're in their city and be able to put a face to any projects that we want. I want to say thank you so much, openly, city engineer, for that. Thank you, community development director, Mr. Sanders, for doing that. It was a great experience for us while we were down there, being able to visit with MDOT. So I want to say thank you. That's the reason I always say, not only do I support you in your travel for your classes, but I know I've been with both of you when we travel downtown, and I notice how you handle your time responsibly in addition to your classes, because that was something you didn't have to do, but that was something that both of you all adjusted your schedules to do. And I want to say thank you so much for all that you do with our city, for our city. Thank you. To both of-- Mr. Sanders, you may take your seat. I yield the floor, Mr. Mayor.
Further discussion? Aldman Maynard.
Yeah, Mayor, I move approval to authorize the mayor to sign the support letter for Loxley Way Blackjack TAP application and commitment to providing one-third of the future matching funds should the grant be awarded by MDOT.
Motion has been made by Aldman Maynard to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Loxley Way Blackjack TAP application and commit the city to providing one-third of the matching funds should the grant application be approved. And that is the letter as presented. Aldman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir, it is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Baldman, Little, Aldman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I think one thing this project accomplishes is, once completed, assuming it's completed and awarded, we will have access from Industrial Park Road, sidewalk access basically from Industrial Park Road, McKee Park, all the way to campus. There's another section on North Jackson Street that, once that section is poured and completed, we will then have access from Old West Point Road all the way across Montgomery to North Jackson, from North Jackson all the way through town, all the way to Green Oak Subdivision and Patriots Park. In crossing there, there's sidewalk access to the Fire Station Park as well. With the new 182 project, there's access fairly close to get you to J.L. Keene Park as well through sidewalks. So I know the monster three years ago from some folks was sidewalks to nowhere, but I think this board and previous boards have addressed a lot of that. And with this project, that's significant connectivity both east and west, and then with these other projects, north and south. So I wanted to point that out. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none?
No. Let's move.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. The next matter before you, Mr. Kemp, you can stay here, is the approval of the city's parking lot layout. Mr. Kemp, do I hear a motion?
Move approval.
Motion has been made by Aldman Maynard to approve of the city's parking lot layout and authorization to proceed with advertisement for bids and construction quotes to complete the project as presented. Aldman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Aldman Little. Aldman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Only to say, I'm glad we're getting this project done. It's well overdue. This is the parking lot, the authorization to redo the parking lot on Main Street behind the businesses there. And if you parked back there recently, a small car could get lost in some of the holes back there. So this is well due. I really like the layout, and I think this is going to be an excellent investment for our student.
Any further discussion? Aldman Little.
I just want to say I appreciate Mr. Kemp moving this forward. I contacted him a few weeks ago. I'd gone through the back of that parking lot. If you hadn't been back there, it's really, I guess, the best thing to say, it was an embarrassment, the condition it's driven into. They made some temporary repairs through the other evening, and it was much better. But there's no striping, and folks are just parking in the drive lanes. It's just, you know, real haphazard right now. And I know the garbage trucks have really taken a toll on-- and you're going to have some reinforced concrete, I believe, under this new design.
That's correct.
And you've also taken input from some of the local business owners.
That's correct.
And I appreciate you taking time and pushing this to the forefront. Maybe the early spring, we can get this addressed and taken care of. Thank you.
Further discussion? Aldman Walker.
Just wanted to ask to make sure the funding for this project was approved as part of the capital improvement loan that we secured, correct?
Yes. Bonds.
Bonds, excuse me, bonds that we secured back up several months ago. Thank you.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Now, thank you, Mr. Kemp. The next matter you have before you is request for approval of a certificate of appropriateness by Mr. Joe Joseph in Fertizy. Motion has been made by Aldman Walker to approve of the certificate of appropriateness request from Mr. Joseph in Fertizy as presented. Aldman Walker, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second? Motion has been seconded by Aldman Little. Aldman Walker, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Discussion. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is the discussion and consideration of RZ 15-07. Mr. Sanders, this is a matter that requires a public hearing. Could you introduce it briefly for us?
RZ 15-07, request by Ramsey Partners to rezone part of a parcel located on South Montgomery and just north of the Clayborne at Adelaide from A1 to R4A. The property lies, or the property directly to the south, which is the Clayborne, was rezoned in 2014 and developed as a Clayborne in Adelaide, which I believe is completed.
Close to being completed.
The application is to develop Phase One of the Adelaide neighborhood in the near future. As you can see on this slide, on the area over red is the Clayborne. That's showing where it was rezoned. This is the area that we're speaking of, which is part of this larger parcel behind that would remain A1 if this were approved. This is the current master plan for their development. The orange area is the approximate location of this rezoning request. This is outlined, I'm pointing to now, is the Clayborne, which is pretty much built out in that manner. There have been two rezonings on South Montgomery since 2013. One is Real Run on Academy Road near the intersection of South Montgomery from R1 to R3 in 2015. And the Clayborne directly south was rezoned from A1 to B1 in 2014. Planning and zoning commission voted to recommend approval on this on December 8, 2015, with one condition, a requested condition. The portion of the parcel requested rezoned shall be subdivided and recorded within six months of approval of the request for rezoning.
Discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, at this time-- Well, first, are there any questions or comments by the members of the board? Aldman Little.
Did you guys receive any feedback from anyone after the letters were sent out?
Received some phone calls asking, you know, what their plans were, but no negative responses.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments by the members of the board? Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll now hear any citizen comments that anyone may wish to make. Any citizen may comment by coming forward, introducing yourself, and you'll be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes. Is there any comment? Any comment? Any comment? Seeing none, the matter is now eligible for adoption. Mr. Mayor?
Aldman Little.
Move approval of RZ 15-07, request by Ramsey Partners to rezone part of the parcel from A1 to R4A located on South Montgomery Street, north of the Clayborne in Adelaide, with parcel number 105-15-007.01.
Motion has been made by Aldman Little to approve of RZ 15-07, a request by Ramsey Partners to relocate, or to rezone a part of a parcel from A1 to R4A located on South Montgomery Street, located on South Montgomery Street, north of the Clayborne in Adelaide, with parcel number 105-15-007.01 as presented. Aldman Little, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Aldman Win. Aldman Little, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Yes, sir.
And the city attorneys asked to be recognized.
Aldman Little, your motion is based on finding a fact that the neighborhood has changed to such a degree as to justify the proposed rezoning and that there's a public need for the proposed rezoning?
Yes, sir.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter you have before you is discussion and consideration of PP 16-02. Motion has been made by Aldman Maynard to approve of PP 16-02, request by Jackson Construction-- Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve of PP-16-02, request by Jackson Construction for preliminary plat approval for plating the final forty-five lots of Phase Eight of Huntington Park subdivision with the parcel number 105-15-003.04 as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Yes, sir.
Discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter you have before you is the discussion and consideration of authorization to advertise to fill a vacant position of assistant planner in the community development department. And Mr. Sanders, do you have a presentation on this matter?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'm Alderman. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I appreciate everyone considering the advertising for the assistant city planner. As you all are aware, there's been a significant amount of growth in Starkville over the past couple of years. In the past five years, there's been $268,749 and $193 worth of development. A little over seventy percent of that has taken place since July the first of 2013. And as you can see from these numbers of the various types of applications and reviews that the planning section does, I want you to take note at the site plan review, I had given two applications. I also want you to take a note at sign permits. Those are two indications of economic health, in that oftentimes you will have lots of site plans that have to always be reviewed, but when a new business comes to town or business expands, they're going to need a sign permit. So, those are two good indications of economic health for a community. Here are the numbers by years. Please note that in 2015, we did 117 applications, and the year before, 99. So, the planning section is extremely busy, and is tracking with an uptick in development in the community. Here's a graph to show the number of cases that have been processed in the past five When it's broken down by, I guess you could say, review types, you have twenty-two percent of development review. That's going for the development review committee. That is very intense for my section in that, one, we receive the application, two, we review part of the site plan as it deals with zoning licenses and subdivision ones. But we also act as a communicator to various departments in placing packets together. So, they're very time-consuming. And then thirty-eight percent is general applications, in which someone might apply for a sign permit or an administrative review application that can be processed fairly quickly. But please note that forty percent are board items. These are items that are going to have to be closely reviewed per application. We'll have to go through some type of a basry panel, and then we'll also have to come to the board for a decision. So, there's a review, a advertisement, a public hearing, which are very much intensive as far as staffing is concerned. To give you an idea of other university towns, Oxford, Mississippi, which has a slightly less population than Starkville, has planning staff of four. Auburn, Alabama, has seven. And Fayetteville, Arkansas, which has a much larger population than us, has a planning staff of eleven. So, increasing by my staff or for the planning section by one is not too unfounded from Oxford. The addition of the city planner would add stability for the city, ensures expertise in handling of applications, provides additional community outreach, allows more completion of specialized projects. The assistant city planner would also assist with research, drafting, adoption of development codes, and design standards to manage growth to principles as adopted by the comprehensive plan. And of course, will assist the city planner in citywide rezonings, redistricting, annexation studies, code text amendments reviews, comprehensive plan reviews, and other long-range planning I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Alderman Little. How long was this position, is it open now?
It was funded with this fiscal year. It's been...
It's not a new position, I guess.
It's not a new position. The position has not been filled since, I believe, April of 2013.
Is there a reason why? What happened beyond that?
It was not funded for budget year 2015 due to budgetary reasons. And I'm asking for it to be filled this year, and it is funded for a salary of $45,000.
I know you guys have been a lot busier in the last year and a half or so than you have in the past. Mr. Budget Chair, is this something that is in the budget?
I think it's currently budgeted for like $40,700.
It was my understanding $45,000, but I could be mistaken.
We can look at that and see. But it was in the planning of this year's budget, yes. I think prior to, when we took office, there was some, if you remember, some changes in the community development office at that time. And so, I think we wanted to get, this board originally wanted to get that in place first before we decided to fill this other position. But it is in the budget for this year. And we're four months into the budget as well. So, we wouldn't need all of that for this year.
Alderman, when?
Mr. Sanders, I said it, but I'll give you the opportunity to chew on home. How much has the, what is the total amount of money that under the tenure of this board, the development projects here in the city of Starkville total?
Close to $190,000, $190 million, $188,519 and $44.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sanders. Mr. Mayor, I yield at this time.
Alderman Walker.
Thank you for bringing this back and showing the charts and the graphs on the workload that the community development department has reviewed for the last five years. I think it's clear that we see a trend upward in the amount of reviews, the amount of development that's happening in town. And I appreciate the prior boards putting things in place that are allowing us to reap a lot of those benefits. And I do believe that we're going to continue to see in the foreseeable future a trend upward in that same type of development. The question that I have is, looking at that, those charts and that workload, I mean, I read what the benefits are, and I read what the advertisement is of what you're looking for this position to do. So, how is that, having this person, what is that going to do or change the workload of both the community development director and the workload of what the city planner does in terms of their day-to-day activities?
Sure. The job descriptions for both the assistant city planner and city planner are very, cast as a very wide net. And I think that was a good thing for the city to do, in that planning departments, large and small, has lots of activities and roles that they must fill. But Starkville is in a unique place, in that it's starting to have lots of development that it's never seen before in its time here. We are about to complete our comprehensive plan, which will outlay various types of goals and objectives, such as arrals with trails. These are very intensive, long-range projects that needs to be carefully managed, both from a process standpoint, a community outreach standpoint, and also from a cost standpoint. And it's my opinion that the city planner should be the project manager for those projects. But we deal with a lot of applications as presented. We also deal with lots of questions and comments from the city. And it's going to be very difficult for one person to do both. So, that's where the assistant city planner would come in, in that they would essentially do the nuts and bolts work of the day-to-day operations of this planning section, essentially questions from the public dealing with zoning issues, processing zoning applications, sending out public notices, writing of staff reports.
Thank you. City Planner, Helen, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
I mean, I think Buddy addressed it, you know, having somebody to help take with the applications and the processing of them, and assisting in getting staff reports together, and doing that aspect of, it's going to free my time up to really focus in on some of the really important stuff, especially the site plans and DRC stuff. I mean, that's the immediate stuff that, you know, needs the most attention. And when you're spread real thin, it's hard to give the attention that it deserves all the time.
And to Daniel's credit, and I have to pat him on the back, we have dealt a lot with a lot of national developers lately. And he, along with other cities' departments, have always worked well with the developers in pushing through the applications as quickly as the city can, so that the developments are not slowed down, and that the city can, and the public can, benefit from the development.
Thank you.
Alderman Maynard is asked to be recognized.
Mayor, I move approval to advertise to fill the vacant position of assistant planner of community development at salary grade of thirteen as presented.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to authorize the advertisement to fill the vacant position of assistant planner in the community development department at a salary grade of thirteen as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Other than to say, thank you, Buddy. I get a lot of positive comments from your department, and you're doing an excellent job, and I'm happy to support this, to try to continue to grow that department and make it even more efficient. Thank you very much.
We appreciate the support of the board and the mayor.
Alderman, when?
Mr. Sanders, let me say this while you're here. I want to say thank you so much for the work that you did to assist with Academy Sports. It needs to be known that had it not been for you, I don't think that we would have been here tonight to bring Academy Sports here to Starkville. And it needs to be known that you are so instrumental, and you and the members of your department. And I want to openly say thank you so much. And for anybody that needs information on it, let them allow them to file a form of information or trash that, Ms. Alderman. Thank you so much for what you've done. And you'll, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Little.
I think it's a very good problem to have, needing help in the community development department, and I hope it continues. I hope we need several more folks. There's that many people, businesses trying to relocate here, or locate here, rather, and open up. I think that's a good problem to have. And echoing Alderman Maynard's comments earlier, I've had several folks mention what a pleasure it's been to work with you guys on recent projects. And I know that it was too long ago that we had a lot of negative comments from that area, and I appreciate your efforts in helping move those projects forward. Thank you.
Thank you. But it's not only the planning section and community development, but it's also the fire department, the police department, the water sewer department. I do have to say, we have a great team.
Thank you. Alderman, when?
I'm going to say this, and I'm going to end it. It took you, as well as our CIO, to come along and change that reputation that you have of being anti-business. And we're certainly not anti-business anymore. And it speaks to that amount, that $190 million that this board has been successful in doing since we've been here. Thank you again, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you.
And I noticed that you mentioned the other departments, police and fire. Tonight, you're not, they have their terms many times when you're sitting over there. So, I just want to say thank you so much again. And you'll, Mr. Mayor.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion saying none? All those in favor of Alderman Maynard's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
By a vote of six in favor with one against, and I have Perkins as the only dissenting vote, this motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. The next matter on the agenda is a request for authorization to accept the low quote motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to authorize the acceptance of the low quote from Groundstone Construction as the lowest and best bid in the amount of $22,380.55 for the Northside Drive drainage improvement project as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Maynard. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for approval of the City of Starkville claims document. Motion has been made by Alderman, when, to approve of the City of Starkville claims docket for all departments, including the Starkville Electric Department, as of January 12, 2016, for fiscal year ending September 30, 2016, as presented. Alderman, when, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman, when, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, I do not.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
By a vote of six in favor with one against, and I have Perkins as the only dissenting vote, this motion passes. The next matter before you...
I want to be recognized for this, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Let me introduce some...
Go ahead.
It's the request for authorization for the Finance Director, City Clerk Lisa Harden, to attend the MML Annual Conference to be held in Biloxi, June 27 through 29, should Master Municipal Clerk and Finance classes be announced.
Mr. Mayor, thanks for the recognition. Mr. Mayor, it's with my pleasure to offer this motion, and I've read the cover sheet, and I want to commend our Director of Finance Administration for serving such a very illustrious role. This cover sheet indicates to me that she serves as Chairman of the Mississippi Municipal League Association Education Committee. That's a very high-profile role, and she is a very deserving staff member to go down there. I mean, there's a very compelling need to go, and she will only be attending conferences should relevant courses become available. So, Honorable Director, we're certainly pleased to, that you are serving this role, and I'm excited that you're going. And I think this should wrap up our delegation for, with your going, I mean, we should be well-represented. I think we should have all the staff that we need. And, Mr. Mayor, with all that being said, I move approval of this.
Motion has been made by Alderman Perkins to authorize the City Finance Director, City Clerk Lisa Harden, to attend the MML Annual Conference to be held in Biloxi, June 27 through 29, as presented. Alderman Perkins, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Perkins, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for approval to hire Kristen A. Odom to fill the position of Accounting Clerk for the Starkville Utilities. Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to approve of hiring Kristen A. Odom to fill the position of Accounting Clerk in the Starkville Utilities Department as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Maynard. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for approval to hire Jamaica Smith to fill the position of Deputy Clerk Accounting Assistant for the City Clerk Finance and Administration Department. Discussion.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve of the hire of Jamaica Smith to fill the vacant position of Deputy Clerk Accounting Assistant for the City Clerk Finance and Administration Department as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Ms. Clerk, does this get you back fully staffed?
Uh, no, sir. We're still lacking a high-rise clerk.
No current discussion, ma'am.
Any discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for authorization to approve Detective Brandon Lovelady to attend the Public Safety Media Training in Biloxi. Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to authorize the approval of Detective Brandon Lovelady to attend a Public Safety Media Training in Biloxi, Mississippi on February 16 through 17, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $650, as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Walker. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a request for authorization. Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to authorize Lieutenant Sean Word to travel to the 2016 Lifesavers Conference, April 2nd through 5th, 2016, located in Long Beach, California, through the FY16 DUI grant, which will be 100% reimbursable to meet a requirement of the grant as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter before you is a request for authorization to enter into an agreement with the, motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to authorize the city entering into an agreement with the Justice Assistance Grant in the area of overtime and equipment in the amount of $52,473, which would be 100% reimbursable as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a request for authorization.
Come on, bro.
Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to authorize the purchase of 25 eight-yard, containers, dumpsters from the Source of Supply bidder, Waste Whip, in the amount of $22,575, as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Wynn. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter.
Alderman.
While we're on sanitation, Mr. Gandy, I'd like to commend your staff on doubling up their duties today. I had nothing but positive feedback from you guys picking up Monday's trash today and basically doing citywide pickup today. I wanted to commend you guys for pulling that off. Thank you.
The next matter on the agenda is a request for approval of an amendment to the power contract. Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve an amendment to the power contract between the City of Starkville and the Tennessee Valley Authority to install under-frequency load shed lay as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a request for authorization to advertise.
Come on, bro.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to authorize the advertisement for bids for substation vacuum circuit breakers for the northeast Starkville substation as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. That exhausts the open session portion of your agenda. You do have items for your potential consideration in executive session. Do I hear a motion to go into closed session? Motion has been made by Alderman Little to go into closed session to determine whether there is a need for an executive session. It does not require a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. I'll ask the public to clear the premises so the board can begin closed session deliberations